Go ahead and call to order this Curville City Council meeting for September 23rd, 2025. Let's rise for our invocation and pledge led by Kent McKeaton.
Good, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of our blessings that we enjoy by being in this part of the country and this part of the world. Especially thank you for all the prayers being answered, those prayers being said, all over the world on our behalf here in Little Curville, Texas. The response has been very heartwarming and very much appreciated. We got volunteers, we have money, we have state federal agencies helping us in many ways. And without your help and guidance and all of that, we would have been in a real big world of hurt. So, thanks for all that. Please guide us as we go through this long-term recovery process. We've got a long road still ahead of us. We appreciate the good progress that's been made in so many ways, but more work to do. Please bless all those around the world that are looking out for us and protecting us from this community to everywhere else in the world. In the name we pray, amen.
Our pledge to lead is to the right of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Have any announcements of community interest?
We have a few. First of all, welcome to everyone tonight. These are a few of the events that we've got coming up over the next couple of weeks. At the library this Saturday, readers, writers, and books. It starts at, doors open at 10:00 and it's, the event will end about 2:30. So, it's a four-and-a-half-hour event. Lunch will be served, but we're asking everybody to register ahead of time so we can make sure that we have enough for those. The first speaker that we have will be Claudia Sullivan, and she'll be talking about journaling. And then we have Mike Bradley coming to talk about memoir writing. And then we finish out with Karen Russell on researching family history. So, if you're interested in any of those, we encourage you to come to the library. Be sure and register again ahead of time so we can make sure you get fed as well. All right. We usually have coffee with a cop. This month, we're having custard with a cop. And that is going to be tomorrow afternoon from 4:00 to 5:30 at Culver's. And these are always a lot of fun events, and that's some great custard over there. So, we encourage everyone to come on by and say hello to your local police officers. And I don't have a slide for it, but another police event is October the 7th, is that correct? National Night Out. And that's where we have a police officer stationed at various places throughout the city. And it's a great time to visit with him. And we'll have something like, more information about that on our Facebook pages and that he's coming up. So, encourage everybody to keep that in mind. All right. This is something we're excited about, and we're keeping our fingers crossed, too. We will have the next concerts by the river, Saturday, October 11th, 7 o'clock. Right now, we're planning on having it at Louise Hayes Park. Like I said, that's something that we're really looking forward to. Could possibly change because of debris removal, but we're sure hoping that we can get it in over there. Two performers at night, Rayne Thorson, who used to work for us and is a great performer, and then also Hogan &amp; Moss and Old Weird America. And I believe that starts 7:00 p.m., so we encourage you to come out, come out to the park. We haven't said that in a while. And bring something to be comfortable with. Also reminding everybody that we're now taking reservations if you want to get a float in this year's holiday parade. That's going to be November 22nd. And we're limiting it to 96. I think we've had 100-plus in the past, but we're going to do 96 this year. I know that it's starting to fill up, so if you're interested in getting a float out there, give them a call. And one more. There we go. This is just, what, a month and a day from it?
Almost a month away.
I'm going to let you take it over because you probably know more about where we stand on this.
I have flyers for this if you want it. This is our first annual downtown festival event in quite a long time. Hopefully, it will go on forever. But we're going to have music, kids' parade at 11:00. There'll be vendors of all types. There'll be music, art, food. All the downtown businesses are encouraged to kind of bump out and showcase what they do. So, you'll have tasting opportunities. And it's going to be a good experience to come down if you haven't in a while, see what's downtown, enjoy the music, enjoy the day. The streets will be closed. It'll be safe and secure. So, it's October 25th, Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. If you want a flyer on this, I have it. Hope to see you there.
All right, council. Any members have any announcements?
Public interest? All right. Let's go on to the visitors' citizens forum. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. We have three. Alfredo Mammon.
Come on up. Please take your name and city for the record.
My name is Alfredo Mammoni.
And where do you, do you live in Curville?
Excuse me?
Do you live in the city of Curville? Do you live, I just need to know where you live. Do you live in Curville?
I live in Curville.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I live in Curville. I also own three properties, four properties in Curville. One in Main Street, where the Hill Country Cafe is, that the strip is mine. And then Eduardo. And then I have the hotel, Hill Crescent.
Gotcha.
The reason I'm over here is, over the years, I've been neglected, the flooding in the backyard and the hotel. I have many times talked to the city administrator. I think one time even the councilmen show up over there. They're going to look into it. I also, I spoke to the previous owner, and she also mentioned she has brought up today city's attention, the problem. One of the problems is it's too shallow, the service that goes in Lane Street. So, you cannot trench, you cannot grade. And also, I want to open an exit towards Lane Street. I cannot do nothing because you have your servers now. And the service lines basically go close to the back line. To make it all worse, there is a little ditch there that constantly the neighbor fills up with trash, garbage cans, everything. And when it rains, practically all the water goes to the cottages because it creates a flood. I haven't heard any answer, anything. It looks to me like I'm not going to get any answer. But I'd like to know whether the city council is going to do or give me an answer, yes or no, so I can take care of the matters on my own. That's one point. The other point, I have, I own properties like Main. I understand you initiated new laws, ordinances for the pedestrians. I'd like to know what are the old ones, what's wrong with the old ones, because I don't even know what I have to go by. And also, who is the one giving all this, all these ideas or planning? Has he checked with the owners of the, of the community? Maybe they can look some input from us. Because right now, I don't have anything. When I bought the property five years ago in Main, there was a lot of things going on. I had to follow all the code enforcements of the city. Prior to that, nobody enforced that. But before I can open anything over there, I was forced to do it. So, what I'd like to know is kindly, I'd like to know information of the past ordinances. It appears to me, some people can put their signs on the walkway, and some people cannot. And my tenants been suffering on that because the city does not allow them. But I can't, I don't have an answer for them because I don't have the city ordinance on the pass. And I don't have anything. So, if you all kindly provide me with the information, not only from the flooding, and also now, before you take any action, the changes that you want to change, so maybe I can look at it and see why.
Some of this sounds like code enforcement. Is that correct? Is that what we're looking at?
Potentially. We can follow up with them on the drainage stuff.
Okay. Here's what I'd like to do. I'm going to ask staff to follow up with you. And if you don't hear from them, I need you to come back and tell me, okay? I'm sure you will. All right. Thank you. Who's next?
Jan Pericini.
Oh, good. I've met them before.
Hi. Hi. I am Jan Pericini, and this is Mike Pericini. And we have a nonprofit called Gunny's Warriors. And it's that time of year again where we have the flags of honor. And there's some changes. It was originally for, in September, at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. And naturally, it had to change. We had to reschedule it. So, the new dates are October 18th through the 20th. Opening ceremony is at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 18th. We will have bands, food trucks, kids' activities, speakers, and a special presentation to an eight-year-old flood survivor at the opening ceremonies. And we fly 500 of these American-made, American flags in perfect rows. It's open and free to the public. They're encouraged to come out, walk through the flags. It's open 24 hours a day. They're illuminated at night. It's quite a sight to see. You have to experience that. And so, we're welcoming the public out to celebrate our community, and we hope it to be part of the healing process for our community. You can purchase a flag for $45, and you get the flag, you dedicate it to your local hero, your own personal hero. And you get the flag, the dedication and everything back at the end of the event. So, we encourage everyone to come out. Again, it's at the Hill Country Youth Event Center in the park there. And it's October 18th through the 20th. Opening ceremony, Saturday, October 18th. And of course, at sunset every night, George Eichner will be playing taps. It's a great honor to have him doing that again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Katie Capple.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Katie Capple, and I'm a resident of Curville. And I'm the coordinator of the Bird City Curville Coalition. And it's been a while since I've been in, and I wanted to give you an update and also some reimaginings that I've had. So, after we were certified, the fall of last year, we had a big party, and that was pretty fun. And then we started working on a bird blind. And the coalition members kept on giving educational activities on the nature and the environment and the birds. And in February, the UGRA did a workshop for park maintenance people on healthy landscapes. And that included not mowing too much and leaving some of the lower-level plants for the birds. Well, our parks department put that into action. And last month, a birder saw a painted bunting in Town Creek. And they haven't been there for a few years because it used to be mowed right to the ground. So, then in April, we started working on the bird blind. And the Calhoun Foundation donated the money. And in June, the construction was completed. It's on Trailhead 3 in the uphill part of Curville-Shriner Park. This has been a cooperative effort of birders, master naturalists, and Parks and Recreation staff who have done a lot out there. Then 4th of July came. And because the nature center was washed out, as well as some other places, a lot of the public education ceased, except on an area that we all needed to know more about, which is our river. And so, we have had workshop after workshop on the river and the geology and all of that, and the weather, which is a good thing. But finally, the 1st of September, the nature center opened again, and all the kids' activities and the meetings that used to be held there, and Eighty Plant Society would meet there, Archaeology Association would meet there. So, all of that is starting up again. Meanwhile, I understand there are multiple committees looking towards the future of how to revive the riverbanks. And of course, we're very interested in that. But in the meantime, the birders are going to the, to the other alternatives, to singing winds, going to the creeks, going out further away from the, from the actual river. Since I've been back on my volunteer gig at the nature center, I've heard a lot from people, when oh when is the river trail going to be opened? And why oh why are they taking all of the plant debris, debris and giving it away? So, I was thinking about that. And I'm always one for bright ideas, so I have a couple. One, some cities collect their yard waste, turn it into mulch, and make it available to planting. I know that we don't do that, and Mr. Rice tells me that would be expensive. But we might all think about it, because next year, if we're going to plant thousands of plants along the river, we're going to need mulch. And it's something that right now is getting thrown away. And I have big piles of brush outside of my house every month when they pick it up. So, that was one bright idea. The other reimagining is that the flood has cleared the way to build out the river trail west to 98th. It would be so much easier now because all the trees are gone. And it might even be easier to get the easements, because the landowners there might see it as an advantage now to have the river trail and some replanting and rebuilding down there. Personally, I think that we need to build the river trail up to the soccer fields as well. These, I know, are on the list of priorities that EIC has for the city. I think they should move up. I mean, they could move up. We're almost done with the, they're working on the pool. Calhoun's finished. So, maybe it's time to think about that. Because that river trail seems to be so important to a lot of people and to the birding community who used to always, we get, we get a lot of tourists coming in for that. So, that would be my idea. The other thing is when I go up to the, up the trail to the soccer fields, I know they're under contract with somebody, but I think there's, could be some other uses that the population of Curville could do at the soccer fields besides soccer. There's some beautiful grassy tree areas, and we could use some more park.
All right. Thank you.
If she wasn't out of time, I would let her also go on about her part in the kids' parade for the festival. But I'm sorry, you're out of time.
She looked me up because she thought I could help with it.
You kind of know a little bit about parades, too.
All right. Anybody else signed up?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for separate consideration. Before we, does anybody have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? All right. We do have an ordinance which needs to be read in.
Ordinance number 2025-20, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas zoning code by changing the zoning of a property known as 307 South Lewis Avenue, making it part of Lot 3, Lot 4, Block 4, Westland Edition, and within the city of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A to general commercial zoning district C3, and providing other matters linked to the subject. Please note that this ordinance was approved unanimously on September 9th, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve it. Consent agenda items 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D.
Is there a second? We have a second here, I think.
That's fine.
Motion to be made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the annual budget. Item 4A. Trudy, do you have a brief presentation?
I will be very brief and happy to answer any questions that you guys might have. I know we've been back and forth over all of this several times, but wanted to bring a few clarifications to light tonight. So, the budget was adopted on the first reading and, and as it was originally proposed at a tax rate of 5579 as the general fund operating budget was built. The tax rate adopted on first reading is a disaster rate of 5711, which is higher slightly by 1.3 cents than the rate that was used to build the budget. So, we talked about this a little bit last time. The general fund's expected to obviously generate more property taxes than was originally proposed in the budget as of right now because of the timing of the flood and the unknowns. We don't know exactly what that is. We're estimating to be around $336,000. So, we really plan to bring back a budget amendment to you once we have better numbers, when we get an updated roll from Kirkcat and those kind of things. So, just letting you know for clarification what those differences are. So, the recommended action tonight, if it pleases the council, is to go ahead and adopt the budget as it was originally presented, with the understanding that once we have more information as the impact of that disaster rate, that we bring that back to you, so a decision can be made, you know, to exactly restrict those funds or how we're going to utilize those funds. So, as it was presented last time, a total citywide revenue budget of $102 million. That includes transfers. So, net of transfers, if you remove those, about $79 million. Expenditures of $118 million with net of transfers, about $94 million. So, keep in mind, this does include capital projects. It includes funds that are not required by policy or law to be balanced. The general fund and the water fund are balanced. So, this does require two motions, a first and a second. Both are, one is the roll call vote. The second one does not include or require a roll call vote. So, happy to answer any specific budget questions you might have or clarify any of the points that were just made.
Any questions?
Just for clarification, this budget is exactly what we approved at the last meeting that does not include the disaster tax rate, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just so the public is aware of that.
That is correct. So, any portion that we may receive above that or below that, we would have to bring back to you as an adjustment. So...
Anybody sign up to speak?
I do need to read in the...
I'm sorry.
And then, yes, we do have two citizen speakers sign up. Ordinance number 2025-18, second reading. An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Curville, Texas fiscal year 2026, providing appropriation for each city department and fund, containing a cumulative clause and containing the savings and severability clause. This ordinance was approved times two unanimously on September 9th, 2025.
Ma'am.
I don't think it was unanimous. Oh, this was. I'm sorry.
Budget, yeah.
The budget was, sorry.
The budget was.
Yes.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. George Barudy.
Mr. Barudy. Don't mind saying your name and at least your city for the record.
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. So, wanted to tie up a couple of loose ends that were kind of created last time. One, we had a little bit of back and forth discussing the difference between inflation and cost of living increases created by the government. And I would argue that the, while they are technically different, it's a difference without a distinction, mostly because both inflation and the rising costs of government, which is what you guys are doing here, is resulting in the exact same thing, which is locally, we have less purchasing power because our income isn't going up at the same rate that you're raising cost of government. So, that's one. The other is people float around this idea that $40 isn't that much. I don't know what it's going to be for me. But the majority of the community that I'm aware of is living paycheck to paycheck. If you're living paycheck to paycheck, that means all your bills are barely paid. You take $10 out, you might as well take $1,000 out, because I'm now not going to be able to pay all my bills that I was paying before unless I find a cut somewhere else. So, this idea that we can just keep doing this year in and year out, I think we need to use different logic for raising taxes. The other is something that she just referenced, this, this balanced budget. The reason you guys vote for the budget first and then the tax rate is, by law, is because what you're doing is you're adopting a budget, and then you're going to go and get the, the tax revenue needed to support that budget. You're not actually supposed to just adopt some arbitrary amount of taxes and then fill it, fill a budget to meet that. And that's what we're doing here. So, I would argue, it's a simple, it's really a simple fix. If, instead of waiting till after the fact to create an amendment, you have two options. You can either adopt the budget that you have in front of you and the tax rate that supports it, or propose an amendment right now that essentially is a expense adjustment to meet the tax rate that you're going to try and collect. Otherwise, you're not being compliant with the law. And so, and it's also just kind of wrong. I mean, to say, you know, we're, we're going to go adopt a tax rate and we're going to fill a budget to meet it. That's just backwards. The other thing is, I couldn't even track down, it was hard, with the budget that's in there, to, we keep talking about the difference between the tax collected. Well, we'll push this to the rate question because it's going to be about that. That's basically it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Kuntwa.
Mary? In your name and city.
My name is Mary Kuntwa. I live here in Curville, and I appreciate you letting me come before you week after week. This is mainly after listening to one, two weeks ago, is some of the questions you had for me about my sources and things like that. It is not city of Curville or local ones. I go either to the state or federal to get my numbers. And just in support of what this gentleman just said, is that the inflation rate from the national inflation site was in 2015, 10 years ago, .07. In 2020, it was 1.4. This is national. And then in 2021, it was 7. So, if you take the last five years and the 60% increases this gentleman's talking about in our budgeting, I don't think we can always go back to it's the inflation rate. And I think I've proven before, I always have to go to a practical application in the price of eggs. The price of eggs went up because we had to kill chickens. And now, we're on the threshold of a threat to our beef industry, correct? So, that's what I want to always tie it back to, cause and effect, not just saying inflation. Why? Why was it inflation? And then, as you can track the employment rates and things like that because of COVID. So, I always like to go back to that. And so, that's about all I want to say, other than my sources. I try to do my due diligence. I try to listen to all of you. I respect your experiences here in Curville. And I like what the request was last time, that you respect all of the expertise you have from all of us old fogies that have moved here with another whole body of expertise, including Camp Pendleton at the fall of Saigon, and watching government entities trip all over themselves when they set up Camp Tleka and things like that. I didn't realize I was learning clear back then. But then, there's one last word I'd like to give you, and I see it in you, and that's called convergence. That is, you don't lock on an idea and hold that idea until your knuckles are white. You look back on all of the experiences, all the education you've been given, all of the people that have been put in your lives and the different time of your lives. And there's that one morning with a cup of coffee when you're going, it's all coming together. So, when I hear inflation, I don't buy it. When I hear the price of eggs, I don't buy it. And when I hear that the budget has gone up 60% in the years that I was looking at Curville and making my decision to move here versus to this year, when I'm here, I don't buy it.
Who's next?
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. Does anyone on the council have a question for Ms. Barron's or city staff? All right. Is there a motion? Actually, the first motion and a second motion. The first motion requires a roll call vote, and the second motion does not. Would anybody care to make that first motion?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number 2025-18 to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year 2026 on second reading.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. All in favor, so vote.
We have to roll call.
Sorry, that's true. We have to roll call. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Sigerman. Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney.
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me. I appreciate it. There's a second motion required. No roll call vote really required, so I won't forget that one. Does anyone care to make that second motion?
I'll make it. I make a motion ratifying the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes in the previous.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes again. Thank you. Item 4B, second reading, ordinance levying the adroit tax rate. Would you like to read that in, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-19, second reading, an ordinance levying an ad valorem property tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas for fiscal year 2026, apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when shall become delinquent if not paid. This ordinance was passed four to one on September 9th, 2025.
Thank you. I see we have some speakers signed up. Who's first?
George Barudy.
Do we have, do we need, I'm sorry, let.
It's up to you. I have a little bit of information to share.
For the speakers, I should have asked.
That's okay, if you so choose. So again, we've discussed this on multiple occasions, but wanted to just bring back exactly what we were talking about here. So this ordinance is proposing to adopt a property tax rate of 5,711, which is the disaster rate. Proposed tax for debt or interest and sinking is 1406, which is the same as the year that we're in, and the proposed property tax for maintenance and operations is 4305, which is an increase from 4189 of the year that we're in, based on the disaster rate that we've been discussing. So a little bit of important information, the deadline for property owners to file a damage exemption is the 20th of October. Again, due to the timing of the flood, overlapping with budget deadlines and those kinds of things, it's really too early for us to report out on the full financial impact of the damages that we have incurred, loss in property value, or really any lost revenue that we may see from this disaster, as the disaster literally happened 20 days before we received a certified roll, so not a lot of time to make adjustments. We will very likely be bringing back a budget amendment once we have updated rolls from Kirk had. So I'm not going to go into all of this, but it's in the packet for anyone who wants to really look at it or will be posted online. So just for clarification, there were some questions last time about the exemption disaster rate and how long it can be used. So if directed by council, it can be used for three years or until the total taxable value exceeds the value of the disaster year. So if our value comes in next year higher than this year's value, then we wouldn't be able to use that rate if, not that we have to, but we wouldn't be able to. So it's also important to realize that 8% is 8% over the no new revenue MNO rate, not 8% over your tax bill from last year. And then also that it is on the maintenance and operations side, so it's not affecting your debt rate or any of those kinds of things. So this motion does require a roll call vote, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the tax rate.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Now we can go to speakers.
George Barudy.
George Barudy.
Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. So one of the things I was starting to go into before, I keep getting confusing information, not from me directly asking, but looking in the stuff. So the question I have is, what is the amount of expected revenue from this rate and what was it with the rate that you just adopted in the budget? So that's one question. The other is, we, you know, again, we talked about last time, the idea came up about frozen taxes and who's got frozen taxes and whatnot. So the rub from the citizen standpoint is seeing a leader vote to put a burden on us that they aren't sharing themselves. So, and I understand the law doesn't allow you to force the seniors to pay their property taxes, they're already frozen, but it doesn't prohibit you from donating your own. And so I did a little looking, and it appears that you're saving, Mr. McKenney, are saving about $2,300, $2,400 if, from your frozen rate to what it would be this year. So I'm challenging you to back up what you're asking us to do by donating that amount to the city. And the same with Ms. Sigerman, I guess it's something in the neighborhood of $1,400. So it would add a lot of credibility to what you're asking us to do when you say it's just what we need to do. When you say we, you don't mean we, you mean us. So you could twist that. I didn't bring you up misuse because apparently it's not that much different from what you're frozen at, so you could play with that.
It's a good thing because the $1,200 that I make per year as your city council representative.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'm donating that portion.
Yeah, but.
That $1,200 to the MNO.
So.
Which will not only cover my $40 increase, but the increase for 30 other people.
Right, but that's not what we're really talking about, your pocket.
You brought it up, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't bring it up that way. I brought up the fact that you guys are asking us to do something that you're not participating in as well.
And I am.
In any case, your taxes are frozen, are they not?
I'm contributing.
Yes, okay, but not here.
Yes, I am, here.
Under this property tax question, which is what we're talking about right now, we stood up and had everybody tell us it's the right thing to do, and we're not doing that. So I'm challenging those that aren't to go ahead and join us as we participate in that. The other thing is what she just mentioned again, if you vote for this rate, you're recording a vote that is adopting an unbalanced budget. I understand all you have to do is have an amendment to this budget that does, it comes in before, that itemizes if it's relief, flood relief, then put it in as flood relief estimated amount X, put it in. Otherwise, you will be recording a vote that you're about to take. The only one adopting a budget that's balanced will be Mr. Harris if he sticks with the vote he did before. And so again, I don't understand, somebody talked about holding on to an idea with your knuckles going white. Why be so stubborn when the fix is simple? Just propose a budget that amends it right now. You can't amend it after the fact. Thanks.
Jaclyn Murkey.
Murkey, your name and city for the record.
Yes, my name is Jaclyn Murkey, 1800 Junction Highway. I just wanted to point out like that it's unfortunate that it's being jumped to a tax rate increase when we have yet to see how much federal revenue is going to come in. We know that FEMA is going to be providing antedem as well from the state level. And I think that it should have at least waited until we know what those numbers are. And right now, this tax increase is basically a gut punch to the flood victims in the city. And even though they will get an exemption for this year, that's not going to be in future years, and they're not going to bounce back that quickly. The budget, as it's been already addressed, the budget and tax rate are closely tied together. I believe in all levels of government, I've said this many times before, there needs to be spending cuts because you can't, you know, reduce taxes without cutting spending. So all of us have to buckle down and look at where spending can be cut and reduced so that we can actually have tax relief, especially for those whose taxes aren't frozen. We, the people, have to be frugal with all the inflation and flood expenses and things that we're experiencing, so government needs to be frugal too and needs to buckle down. Property taxes in the city are antagonistic to young people, and the city council budgets and policy are basically widening the gap between rich and poor, it's basically eliminating a middle class in the city of Kerrville, and that's not good. I mean, we need a healthy middle class to be able to sustain the economy. It's a beautiful place, lots of great people here in Kerrville. I love it living here. I don't know, you know, how much longer I can afford it, though. And lots of places, lots of people want to raise families here, but won't be able to unless there's a cut in spending and in inflation. We don't have all the bells and whistles, or we don't have to have all the bells and whistles that other cities have. You know, there's ways to cut things to be able to be more frugal, so I appreciate y'all's time.
McKenna Baxley.
McKenna Baxley, I'm a Kerrville resident. It was made very clear to us at the last meeting that this council does not care about the will of the people who elected you, but their own agendas as the council themselves. It was very hurtful to hear council members speaking about how the increase is only going to be $40 for us personally and compared it to playing a round of golf. As a young person in Kerrville, who's getting married this weekend and has better things to be doing with her time, I find it very hurtful that an elected official would try to tell me how I won't be affected because it's only $40. And I don't know where that number's coming up, but I know my taxes go up more than $40 every year, and that was before this increase. And I also don't play golf because I can't afford it. I can't afford that $40. And just because I'm not in the establishment group of realtors, teachers, the Chamber of Commerce, and all the bankers, that doesn't mean my voice doesn't matter. City manager Dalton Rice brought up at the last meeting that we need the tax rate, tax increase because revenue from sales tax isn't enough, among some other reasons listed. But that's because we don't have excess spending on, we can't spend it on consumer goods because our taxes are currently unaffordable. And Councilman McKenney laughed when the Biden economy was mentioned at the last meeting, but that's clearly out of touch with the difficult time that me and my fellow consumers and taxpayers had. We don't have disposable income, and we had to find ways to cut our expenses already just to afford our basic necessities. It's comforting to know that you all find that amusing. Raising property taxes in Kerrville will reduce the sales tax revenue even more because we will have even less income to spend on consumer goods. And my income doesn't change with the economy. I have a fixed amount to live on, and I don't produce money out of thin air, even if it is just $40, like Mr. Barudy mentioned. If you're living paycheck to paycheck, you don't have $40 anywhere. And it is more than that, it's not 40. It was also mentioned at the last meeting that the city can't dip into their reserves to come up with the funds needed, but these tax increases among reckless spending in the past has made me have to dip into my savings, and it's draining it whether I like it or not, and I can't get that back. And so when you have a temporary issue like the city's been dealing with, that's what your reserves are for, is a rainy day, and we know we had a rainy day on July 4th. I would also, it would be nice to have clarification on where the 300,000 median income came from, that was mentioned at the last meeting. From what I've researched and been able to find publicly, Kerrville's median income is 34,000 for an individual, and a household is 59,000. And I can tell you that my soon-to-be husband and I's combined income won't even be a third of 300,000. Regardless of if this is a temporary tax increase or not, it's unsustainable for the working class of Kerrville. We're coming to ask you for relief, and it's consistently been slapped in the face by this council or ignored. And I've seen some responses to our emails opposed to the tax, saying that you have 10 to one email supporting the tax, but the testimony at these meetings does not reflect that, and I can't remain silent. I know you'll likely vote with the establishment once again and raise the property taxes, but I can go to sleep tonight knowing my conscience is clear. Can you say the same? Thank you.
I thank you for that, and good luck. I hope your wedding is wonderful. Congratulations. I don't think we were talking about a $300,000 median income, but a $300,000 median price of house. Anybody else?
Mary Kantois.
Mary, thank you.
I'm not that eloquent, and I'm never that prepared. Thank you, both of you. And I'm going to just go back to trying not to repeat all the good numbers, all the good research that has preceded me in this meeting and the meetings before. My journey began here when a neighbor got a letter, six of my neighbors in a subdivision of over 100, that there was going to be zoning behind us. That was the only opening shot across our bow. And with some help from even good discussions with folks in this room, we were able to come, discuss it with you, have you listen to us, and make a really reasonable discussion or decision when there's so many multifaceted or multiunit places already for sale all over town. So that's all I'm going to ask for again tonight, just listen to the boots on the ground. My home here is my investment. It is my, what I call my 2030 plan, and I had one. I started it eight years ago with the help of my son. I looked at Asheville, North Carolina. I looked at Athens, Georgia. I looked at Boise, Idaho, and I, by almost default, came here. And yet, the more things that I saw, the more I saw the goodness that was here. And the other reason that this is important to me is about legacy. You're our historian. I came in touch with your name years, several years ago by the lady who writes the Texas History homeschool curriculum, raves about you. Those are your wheelhouses. My wheelhouse is not to be a burden to my kids or to my grandkids and to be healthy. I got the best physical I got after three years of living here because I'm out using those things and going to AD's meetings and things of that nature. That's here for me already. But I also want to point out some of the other things about repairing the river. You have university-trained experts who volunteer. We get the mulch, we lift the mulch, we tread the mulch, and we will continue to do that for you. So here's just, I'll try to sum it up. The word I kept hearing about the need, the absolute need for this money, is flexibility for contingencies to come. And we've just proven what the city can do with a contingency nobody even could predict. And we're still doing it. The church I attend has a fund of $1,500,000, and we took care of our own. We didn't ask you, we didn't ask FEMA, and we're still out there spending that money. We, for free, housed the agency that was still working in North Carolina and still looking and working in Florida. These things go on and on and on. There is no magic moment where you will know how much Texas paid, how much the federal government paid, how much your taxpayers paid, and how much your churches, your community organizations have paid, will pay, and are continuing to pay if you just tell us you need it. That's the one thing I've seen here. We had a church on July 4th, 9:00 in the morning, setting up courts, providing free food, providing water, and having weather reports for folks as they came in. You know you have your Salvation Army and your Croc. They were out at the Walmart at 9:00 in the morning already pouring coffee. We were at city, pardon me, you know where we are, or I don't have to go through all that again. However, what I wanted to just express and support and personalize, because that's all I can do at this age and stage, is what one of the young ladies said. Before you take this next vote, have you really looked at anything other than a future access to money we don't even know we need yet on the backs of the people that are already paying into the [inaudible] volunteering and will be there for you then, will be for you before? Please don't pass this, wait.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Does anyone have a, does any council member have a question for Ms. Barron's or for staff? All right. This is a roll call vote, but it requires a motion first. Would anyone care to make that motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2025-19, the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of 0.5711, which is effectively a 7.98% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please, if you have something to say, now's the time. All right. Would you care to call the vote, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Sigerman. Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney.
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
All right. Next item is 5A. This is a first reading of an ordinance. Would you care to read that in, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-22, an ordinance deleting Article II Sidewalk Cafes, Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, and moving these provisions to Chapter 90 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of Said Code and creating a new Division Two of Article II within Chapter 90. Said division titled Sidewalk Amenities in the Downtown Core, which comprises regulations regarding the use and enroachment, encroachment of amenities onto sidewalks within the city's downtown core, providing for a penalty for violation of any provision hereof, providing for an effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have four citizen speakers signed up.
Yeah. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. This is a, moving the ordinance out of Chapter 30 for the sidewalk cafes and into Chapter 90 for the sidewalk amenities. Again, this is a Kerrville 2050 item. Again, this is a Kerrville twenty-fifty item, D-one-three, to ensure that streetscape plans accommodate outdoor dining, including the use of right-of-way where feasible. So what we are talking about is all the different amenities within the public sidewalk, so between the back of curb of the street and the property line of the building. Here's a few examples of existing ones downtown. Now, the current ordinance is an annual permit. It allows tables and chairs only. It is charged fifty dollars per table. There is a site plan and layout reviewed, required, and there is a requirement for certificate of insurance currently. The proposed ordinance would be a one-time permit. We're recommending a fifty-dollar application fee. Includes all sidewalk amenities, not just tables and chairs. There's no site plan required. The application will have a section to describe what the amenities are, just so staff can review that, make sure there's no conflicts. The owner of the business would be required to maintain a five-foot minimum clearance for ADA accessibility along the sidewalk and an access from the street to the front door of the business. Certificate of insurance is required, and this would be, if approved, would be effective January first. Give staff more time to get out to the business owners and work through the application process. Excuse me. Have had some confusion. Got a couple emails. I know you guys have received a few emails as well. There is one section in particular, as far as the prohibited obstructions. One sentence says, "Such prohibition includes objects or the extension of buildings or structures that encroach above this area." So that would be any attachment to the building, whether it's awnings, eaves, signage, lighting, those are not included in this permit, but without a building permit or other permit, those would not be required or be allowed. So all the existing building extensions are not subject to this permit. That was one, one point of contention. The insurance requirement, the recommendation would be that it is general liability insurance, that the city be named insured, just so that if there is ever any issue, that is a policy decision between city manager and council. That's part of the application process, not actually part of the ordinance. If you recall, all of our fees and insurance requirements are kept at the policy level so we don't have to amend the ordinance every time there's a change in that. So certainly open to discussion on that, whether it's, the city is a named insured on that certificate or not. Certainly take direction from council and city manager on that. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the speakers.
Questions for Mr. Paxton. Do you have something?
So, that is correct. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. So to kind of clarify the insurance piece, the big, the big confusion on it is, if it's the sidewalk and it's public space, typically we're building, you know, owner, their insurance would stop at the doorway. If they are putting planters or benches or anything in a public right-of-way, we have to make sure that that's covered. So we are okay if it's just general liability, and as long as that business owner's general liability covers all of that stuff in the public right-of-way, we're okay with that. We just have to make sure that whatever insurance we do, that their planter or something is covered, you know, within that. Drew, can you go back to the pictures with the four? Yep, that one right there. So he kind of briefly talked about the, the requirement, the current ordinance. Current ordinance is, you know, something I think that, based off of somebody had talked about, it's kind of been in play for, for many years, and I think at one point about five years ago, it looked at, you know, changing. We started reevaluating this after we had some business owners, you know, question, hey, there's a lot of money coming in per table, what does this look like? It doesn't, you know, factor in planter pots or, you know, anything. So depending on the direction that city council wants to go, you know, tonight, if we choose to leave the current ordinances in place, basically every single one of these properties that would have something in the public right-of-way, all those planter pots would be, have to be removed based off the current ordinance, you know, as of now, if we decided to, you know, not change to this new one. So the intent, you know, that Drew and, and city council, you know, had talked about during the workshops, because this has been in the works for, for many months at this point, was to simplify this process, simplify, you know, everything for the business owners downtown and make it less burdensome and less costly, and give them a lot more flexibility with what they got. So I think there was some disconnect, you know, on that, but we just wanted to clarify all of that.
Also, it's a one-time fee and not a recurring fee, correct?
Correct.
And it's not a per-item fee, it's just a blanket one permit fee.
Yes, sir. And so the, the insurance reporting each year would be self-reported, so once you get it, you report it and self-report it.
Yeah, I think on people who use some of our properties, we require them to have us as an additionally named insured, me personally, not the city. And I haven't ever heard that there was a huge cost for that, so.
Don't think there's any cost for that. Insurance agent can write a certificate of insurance.
All right.
Well, I've gotten quite a few for the festival. Been a problem with me in this. And I would like to just make sure I understood you correctly. So Section Ninety dash forty, prohibited obstructions, existing obstructions will not be affected by this.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Does that mean anything, canopies?
Attached to the building.
Anything attached to the building?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions before we go to speakers, citizen speakers? Did you sign up to speak? You did not, did?
I have a question for either one of them.
Not right now. We'll talk, we'll get to that later. All right. Any questions for staff before we open up for speakers?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The, so it's a one-time fee for the current tenant or occupant to the building.
Correct.
If they sell or somebody else moves in, then the next occupant would have to apply for the fee again.
Yeah, for the life of the, for the life of the business, or if the business sells, it'd be a new owner. That way, we've got contact information and the details of what they're putting out there.
Thank you.
Any questions, council?
I'd like to hear the speakers first.
Okay. All right. Our first speaker?
Joseph Martin.
Martin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joseph Martin. I live about that far out of the city limits, but my office is in the city limits, and my client lives and has business in the city limits. I just got this recently.
Do you mind telling us who your client is?
My client is Turtle Creek Vineyards, Olives and Vines. I just got this earlier, and I understand the intent. I've had conversations with Dalton Rice, the city manager, and I agree, certainly agree with the intent. There was a couple of things that jumped out at me right quick, was this also applies to alleys and right-aways. Specifically, my client has a patio that is in the back of the building, but it fronts on an alley. So I need to look at this closely to see how much, how, what any effect this ordinance would have on my client's patio that has movable planters and tables and whatnot. So I did talk to Dalton Rice. There's a couple other property owners, four properties, the McDonald's. And we'll begin with them to see, all of us to go over these, this ordinance, to see if there's any things we really can't live with between the first and second reading. I did have a kind of question, if it passes the first reading and there's an amendment to it, do you have to have another first reading of the ordinance as amended? I mean, so if it's a, it's a minor amendment to it, we can do it. And the other thing on the insurance, I've dealt with a lot of insurance, and it named the City of Kerrville and the Parks and Recreation Department as an additional insured. You're not going to get an insurance company to insure that planter. You will get an insurance company with no problem whatsoever to add the City of Kerrville as an additional insured, which would cover any liability if a citizen tripped over that planter that belonged to Turtle Creek Vineyards. So just, you know, make sure that the city council and the attorney knows that we're not going to be insuring planters, but we can add the city as a, as an additional insured.
Yes, sir.
That's all. Any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alley was one of my questions, so thank you, yeah. You answered it.
Our next speaker?
Sue Schultze.
Ms. Schultze?
Hi, I'm Sue Schultze. I'm the owner, part-owner of Turtle Creek Olives and Vines, and we're on two-eleven Earl Garrett in the historic Masonic Building. And my main concern, you guys did answer a lot of my concerns, and my anxiety is reduced by just listening to what y'all had to say. So thank you. But the exterior back patio where we own property, we own more property than we actually acclaimed for that patio, and there was some verbiage in what I've read that made me a little concerned that the city might try to attempt to remove our patio, based on, like our patio, all the barrels are movable, so the city has access to all of their utilities. And also, the, the property, there's access for the garbage trucks to get in and people to park. So my main concern was, does this affect the patio?
That's your, that's your property, right?
Okay.
Yes, the.
It's not, see, the sidewalk, it's not your property, so it's a different.
Right. I know it's in the back of the building, but it did mention right-of-way, utilities, alleys, so all those kind of jumped up as.
You're all on your own property.
Yes, we are. We are all on our own property.
The alley behind your property, except, there's a portion of the alley that runs towards Washington Street, but immediately behind your property is private property. There are easements that are in that space, but it's not a public alley. So this is just affecting any public alleys.
Okay, perfect.
So, no impact.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
William Rector.
Dr. Rector.
Thank you, Honorable Councilmembers. Bill Rector, seven-oh-five Water Street. We were, I'm here representing HDBA and Main Street Advisory Board, and we sort of been in whiplash. We attended the workshop a couple of weeks ago and heard Drew's presentation, and we were ecstatic. This is a great ordinance, this is great for downtown, but the devil's in the details. When I read the ordinance, I became confused. And I think if I have trouble understanding it, then maybe other people that would also have trouble understanding it. So what I'm asking tonight is that we pause on this and that we have groups get together, look at it, see if we can understand it, make sure we understand the wording and what those words mean, so we can move forward and all embrace this ordinance. That was done with the animal resources ordinance. The group met, they all agreed on what the ordinance said, they came back and embraced the ordinance before council. We'd like to have the opportunity to do this. I know that the county, city's been working on this for five months, but I'm not sure how many people that are affected were really consulted about this. It says on the fifth, whereas, in the ordinance, whereas the city's Main Street Board has recommended approval of the proposed regulations and fee, the Main Street Board has not looked at this ordinance. It's never come before Main Street. I've talked to many people in business in downtown, and none of them were consulted on the wording or the conditions of this ordinance. So I would ask that we, we sit down together, that we go over the wording, we understand what it means, and then come back and ask you to approve it. Thank you.
Judy Eichner.
Ms. Eichner.
Mayor and council. I too am here for much the same request, oh, six-oh-four Cardinal, I'm sorry. I am delighted to see this being talked about again. We've been talking about this in some fashion for about eight years, and it, we need it very much. I appreciate some of the understanding that you guys have, have given tonight, that helps a lot. And I know what the goal, ultimate goal is, and I want to see it accomplished. But I think that it would be really good if this was taken to the Main Street Board. I think they need to, maybe not so much weigh in it, but at least have conversation and understand it, and the HDBA Board. I do know it went to the HDBA Board a number of years ago, and there was a lot of opposition, but there's some changes in this now, and I just think talking a little bit more, more conversation with the, the people who are downtown and this will affect, would, would go a long way. So I'm just asking that, don't, don't get rid of it, we need it, and let's keep it going, but I would just ask for more conversation with those who are going to be affected by it. Thank you.
That's the end for citizen speakers.
Thank you. Mr. Rice, do you have something?
Really, just on the Main Street Advisory Board, I had spoken with Councilmember Seigerman briefly. One of the things that we kind of looked at in, in the formation of the Main Street Advisory Board is really what is their, their goals? You know, what do they want to do? And so I think the big takeaway, and we don't disagree with, you know, Bill Rector and Judy Eichner on this, is, you know, having the Main Street have some goals and what they kind of want to do, are they just focused on the Main Street program? Are they kind of focused on the downtown? You know, this is kind of a general city ordinance, even though this would just apply to the downtown, you know, kind of downtown area. But I think it would really be a good opportunity to, not necessarily maybe pause this, that'll be up to the, you know, pleasure of council, but really for us to kind of encourage the Main Street Advisory Board to come up with goals, come up with some expectations of what they should advise city council on, and then we can kind of move forward. And I think that'll, that's a really good opportunity and opportu, opportunity out of this.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton or Mr. Rice before we proceed?
I have a comment or two.
Please.
Okay, so, to my knowledge, this was never discussed at a Main Street Advisory Board meeting, however, it was, it's a good chance for us now to say, is it something we want to have on our agendas? And how specific do we want to get into our board meetings about the details of ordinances and permits? Certainly want to be kept, you know, up to date on what the city is planning and what to do, so I think that could be improved, for sure, so that we could have a voice. If I understand this correctly, if we do keep this in, we still have a chance to edit it, tweak it, and perfect it, so to speak, although I think it will always be kind of a work in progress, as our downtown and changes, I think we'll have other needs and we'll need other changes. So if we approve this on the first reading, do we have time between now and the second reading to make any of those changes, rather than pulling it all together from?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll add one more piece to that. You know, just like any ordinance we do, and just how this ordinance kind of came back, was we had some, a concerned business owner that talked about the current state of this ordinance, which prompted us to reevaluate and reengage. So we know city council's intent, based off of the direction that y'all go tonight, we know our intent in what, you know, started and preempted this, this conversation. And so as we start working over the next ninety days, where if we start realizing there's some issues, you know, that gets outside of the intent based off the legalese of the ordinance itself, we can come back to those and do some amendments, again, to tweak it. We know the intent, and we're not going to let the legalese side of things stand in the way of that intent, we'll just make sure we clarify those.
And then in the future, we, Main Street would love to be as involved as they can with their input, you know. I, we're downtown all the time, we try to really converse with the business owners and see what your needs are, so just keep us informed, keep us in the loop, we'd like that.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. I was concerned in that the, the Main Street Board and the HDBA was not fully aware of this document, nor had they had any input into the creation of this ordinance. When we did the animal ordinance, we had representation from every entity we thought would be affected by the ordinance. We had Freeman Fritz, we had, or, I'm sorry, the Big Fix, we had code enforcement, we had Mike Hayes involved, we had some other city staff, we had Kerrville Pets Alive, they were all involved in developing the new animal ordinance, because we were all, including Kirk County Animal Services, everybody kind of had a vested interest in this document. And I feel the same way about this ordinance in that I think that, I'm, I'm not sure that, that you could pass this on first reading and get enough input in time for second reading. I would personally like to see more engagement between downtown and the people affected by this ordinance, and then bring it back once everybody's had a chance to look at it, absorb it, dissect it from a legal standpoint, and then bring it back for first reading. So that's, that's basically my position on that.
Comment?
Uh, yes.
Go, please.
I agree with Brenda.
Good.
Thank you.
One time.
The first time either. You had a comment?
Uh, Mr. Hayes.
Uh, Mr. Hayes, what is the timeframe between first and second? Does it have to be done on the next, in the next meeting? Is it a two-week timeframe?
Well, the charter's not clear, but I would say that our practice, council's practice, has been consecutive meetings.
I knew it wasn't clear on it, that's why we wanted to find out.
We've been working on, talking about this for eight years, you know, bunging it off.
I'll say that I did get, I was contacted by several downtown business owners, one of which I was talking to while I was walking in the door. But, uh, it needs to happen, we need to have this figured out. I just don't want to get in the habit of kicking a can down the road, because we know what happens. You kick the can down the road long enough, you forget about the can. So, I think it's a great idea. I love, I love downtown, it's beautiful, but we got to protect and ensure, you know, Michelle C. you brought up a while ago, the back alley, kind of raised some questions, because I don't want to say I frequent your establishment, because it might make me sound bad, but I do enjoy going there. And I like the fact that you do have that out back. And I also have to think about our ADA, and with that question, but it doesn't affect your, your patty on the back, so I know the sidewalks and everything else with that, so...
That was one of the reasons why it's...
Yes, ma'am. So, um, I just don't want to kick a can down the road. We need to make sure that, but we need to make sure that we have plenty of time where everybody that's going to be affected by this downtown has a chance to get together, and I kind of encouraged, um, yeah, why am I just...
That guy.
That guy, not Drew.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Oh.
Mr. Martin, sorry, I'm just like, duh. I encouraged Mr. Martin to get with Mr. Hayes, as two legal guys would do, and try to figure this out between the readings. So, that's, and Joe, Martin, sorry.
Can I just ask one more thing? Well, in other words, if we stretch this out for three months, in five months or six months, we have additional questions and concerns, it's not like you'll never be able to come and revise it, because I can't think, I can't imagine that we're going to have enough time to think of everything. So, I just want to make that clear, is that I think it's kind of evolving, and it has since the eight years and five years. Things have changed so much down there, so...
So, I will, I will add this, you know, Councilmember Seigerman, and, and I can't remember who said it, but somebody brought up the animal control, or the animal ordinance. Even with all of that, we're still looking at making tweaks right now.
Exactly.
So, no matter how much you really, you know, get involved, the whole point of this was to really simplify it. I know, you know, HDBA and Main Street was talked about, and you know, yes, we, we had kind of talked briefly about the Main Street Advisory Board, and kind of some of that lack of understanding of what the roles were. HDBA has been kind of in turmoil since I've been here, and so, I'm being, you know, being honest. So, there's, there's some disconnect where, you know, we had, one of the meetings, we had a, you know, a few folks come in, and so, we've tried to address all of those, we've kind of addressed some of these things through, you know, through the, through the communication and, you know, through partnerships on it, you know, we've had a couple workshops on it, you know, on the evolution of this. I guess really the big question, you know, we, you know, we have, you know, you know, based off of this, is to make sure that we kind of do this the right way, should we delay, you know, enforce, you know, enforcement of the current ordinance if we decide to move this off for, you know, a month or two months or, you know, 90 days? Because when you start getting a lot of cooks in the kitchen, things can get very challenging. So, I just want to make sure that we know what we should be enforcing and implementing currently versus, you know, versus not. So, that's going to be my biggest question, depending on...
The current ordinance would have some big problems with it.
Correct.
The current ordinance.
Absolutely.
So, that's what I'm concerned about.
I mean, I think that would cause a lot more issues by sending notifications on planners and everything else, yes.
We're aware of that, it's not like we don't know about them, so...
Yes, ma'am.
I think, go ahead, please.
I, I think we ought to set the standard that we communicate and with the affected groups before we, you know, have, have the first reading. I, I just don't think it's a good idea, just, I mean, I, I'm all in favor, in general, about all this, but I'm not in favor of, you know, really should run, then run past the downtown groups, I think, I mean...
Yeah, and what we did with the Animal Ordinance Committee is we set deadlines. We had a certain amount of time, whether we met once a week or once a month, we had a specific, specified amount of time to meet, get what we wanted written down, get it through the legal process, and bring it back. And, you know, I don't think that, that we couldn't do the same thing with this ordinance.
How much time do you think will need?
Yeah, I was going to say...
I'd say 90 days.
Three months?
Yeah, we may not, 60 days.
I mean, since I'm on the board, and I have been thinking about these things for a long time, they're not new to me, and I don't think they're new to the board.
Yeah, 60 days. I mean, Delane, what do you think?
I think no more than that.
Yeah, okay.
So, what I'm hearing is consensus to delay action on this ordinance until the first meeting in...
It would have to be January, basically.
In January, correct?
Unless we do it, unless we have a second meeting in November, and then the second re, depending on what, what happens.
January, probably.
When's our first meeting in November going to be? Because that's some better instinct.
The only one we have, it's...
Yeah, so we're, we're going to have to make some, we're, we're going to have to bring November stuff and adjust it anyways.
I'd like to see it in November, personally. Sooner the better, quick kicking.
And that's fine with me. I, you know, I mean, y'all get your group together, hash it out, and bring something back.
So, kind of a, oh, sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
So, I'm hearing consensus that they want to talk about it in November.
Yeah.
However, our meetings in November are not set.
Correct.
We're not, probably, we're going to cancel the second one, and we may need to change our other meeting, because it falls on a federal holiday, so we can't, we can't really meet on that date. Are y'all comfortable then with talking about it in the first meeting in November?
Sure.
Which may be our only meeting in November?
Yep.
All right.
You mean, having the first reading.
I think we have consensus then to, to put it on an agenda in November, and, and give them some, and give people some grace on enforcing the current ordinance until we've had a chance to talk. Secondly, and it's, it's a small point, but my family also owns property in the downtown area, and this will affect me as well. All right, so, if that's the consensus of council, we're just going to ask that this be placed on, placed on an agenda in November.
Okay, and quick question, just, you know, for kind of point of clarification, who all do we want to be on this? Every single downtown business owner, or, I, I kind of need some guidance on that, because no matter what we do, somebody's going to be upset with something on a decision that's going to be made. So, I want to make sure that we get the right people in the right room to be able to make this decision, and I can use some guidance from council on that one.
I'm going to defer to Delane, but I think that if you're...
How many, how many, Bill, you know, Dr. Rector, rather, you know how many members are on your, members of your HDBA? We don't need them all, I mean, that's, 72?
The executive committee.
Yes, just, well, we need to scale that to that amount, and make sure we have a, you know, a diverse spread group that covers, you know, as much of a good areas, we can't active, active businesses.
And the Main Street Board.
And then, we need the Chair of the Main Street Board, which is Howard Taylor, and I should be there, because I'm the liaison.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't think, I don't, you don't need 30 people, I don't think.
What, whatever kind of the, the council feels is going to be best on this one.
Well, let's keep it around 12. We'll just make that our goal, and if we stretch it to 13 or wherever, we will, but I, I need to look at our list, and you need to look at your list, and we need to look at a list of downtown business owners, and just make sure that, that it covered.
And just be aware, too, you know, the, you know, this ordinance would cover technically all of the city, even though it mostly applies to downtown. Main Street downtown is a much larger area than the HDBA corridor of downtown.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I know, it's a little complicated, actually.
That's why we try to simplify it.
That's, that's still the goal.
We'll see.
Yeah, okay.
The ordinance is effective in the downtown core only.
This ordinance, right?
Yes.
Okay. That is Washington to Sydney Baker?
Washington to Clay, Barnett to the river.
Okay, okay.
Just, just a clarification, we can have called meetings for Main Street. We don't have to stick with our one meeting per month.
Here, let me call on Dr. Rector to speak. Dr. Rector, please speak.
Hello, Rector, thank you.
All right. I think we beat that to death. Let's move on to item 6A. Mr. Paxton.
Can I ask one question? Sounds like the first meeting in November is going to be November 10th, so that'll be the first meeting of this order.
Yes.
Correct.
The first meeting of November...
Okay.
We'll get it done.
Thank you.
The first meeting of November will probably be rescheduled to November the 12th, at the pleasure of council, but...
Because of Better Instinct, I mean, for...
Definitely will have a minute.
Thank you.
If you have more birthdays on the 10th, so, obviously.
All right, item 6A, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution which does include a public hearing for a street name change for public safety purposes from Bow Drive to Bow Lane, as per the City of Kerrville Resolution 15-2013, the road naming and addressing policy and procedure affecting existing Bow Drive addresses 301 through 315 Bow Drive, and the Mariposa subdivision. You can see those properties there highlighted. With the completion of the Mariposa subdivision, Bow Drive now connects to Bow Lane, and as you can see, it switches from Bow Drive to Bow Lane at the end of the 400 block, but not at an intersection of the next adjacent street. And the reason staff recommended the change of Bow Drive rather than Bow Lane, Bow Lane continues all the way to the 900 block, moving northeast. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Oh, sorry, one more thing. The numbering is consistent from the 301 all the way to 907, so the numbering is consistent regardless of the suffix of the street.
Mm-hmm.
So, just want to make sure that's clear.
Questions for Mr. Paxton? This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing in a moment. Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Thank you.
Right. The name change then is consistent with existing ordinances, and do we consult with emergency services and 911?
Yes, I've spoken with Kerr 911 about this, police chief and fire chief.
Their recommendation was the change?
Correct.
Okay. This is a public hearing, you didn't have to sign up to speak, so I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:23. Come up, state your name and city for the record.
We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, well, all right.
Darcy Presley, 307 Bow Drive. I, I think probably everybody's gotten my emails, but I do have a copy, if you have not had a chance to read them.
Did read them.
Anybody? Anybody? I realize that you are saying to change the street name because of emergency services, the reasoning is because of the emergency services request. It is Bow Drive, Bow Lane, it's Bow, regardless. I've spoken to several police officers and fire fighters, firemen, and they don't seem to think that it's a big deal, because it's Bow, and it is in numerical order. I do have several reasons, and I think you guys have already probably read through them, but I will briefly or quickly go through them. You know, first of all, for us to have to change everything from driver's license to personal contacts, credit cards, Medicare, Social Security, all that other stuff, would be a tremendous burden to go from lane, drive to lane. And as far as safety issue, I, I'll get, I'll get to that. There are several streets that are already in Kerrville that do go by two different names, like Legion Drive changes to East Main after it crosses the Meadowview. East Main becomes Aranda's Pass, not crossing the street, Aranda's becomes North Street, North becomes Shriner, and Shriner becomes Harper Street. Holdsworth Drive changes to Golf Street after crossing Sydney Baker. West Water becomes Jackson Road, and Jackson becomes Glen Road. And Main Street suddenly becomes Broadway before it becomes East Main. So, there's lots of changes in street names, regardless if there's one that's been crossed or not. And the recently approved Platte, I think you guys approved the Mariposa subdivision, shows Bow Drive, they already have the signs up, so that would save money there, they wouldn't have to get new signs. As far as, I think, logic, 301 to 315 is Bow Drive, and then, as you said on the map, goes to 400s, and then there's four small houses before it hits Pinto, that are 495, 96, 97, 98, then it goes to 500s, then it hits Meadowview, then it goes 600s, and all the way to the top of the hill, Bow, to Bow Lane. It's in numerical order, there's no overlap, there's no problem with understanding where you'd have to go if you had an emergency, whether you were ambulance, a fire truck, police officer, sheriff, whoever, it, there's no problem, it's just Bow. Why have to change Drive to Lane? It would make a big mess. And due to the proximity of where it's located, we're, our, the front entrance to Weston Home Place is closest to the house, the new Hall of Justice, Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department at the end of Legion Drive, the Sheriff Courage, Police Department, most of them would probably just use that entrance anyway, and boom, it's 301, all the way, where we had to go. I don't see a fire truck or anybody else going all the way around, unless they're already over there, unless the police officers were already on patrol in that area, to go all the way around to hit Bow Lane from the other side. So, I mean, there would be no problem figuring out whether it's dark or not where the house is, or if you had to get to it. Amazon, UPS, USPS, FedEx, you know, even the pizza guy can find our house, I don't see why it's a problem for emergency people. I'm sure they can figure it out, too.
Thank you. We did have someone else sign up, and we'll call them next.
Charles Kemp?
Mr. Kemp.
Hi. My name is Chuck Kempf. I live at 314 Bow Drive. I don't have too much more information, other than nine out of the 10 people, or homeowners affected by this change, signed or were included, have, have, have approved Darcy's email. And again, we just don't see the necessity of this. It's been this way for 20 years, there's no confusion, and we just ask that please, for our sake, to make our lives simpler, to please, just not do it. If you don't, you don't have to do anything, and it will, this, this, this issue will be decided. Also, I, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and say thank you for staying on the job during this time, it's been very difficult, I'm sure it's been difficult on you, so thank you, and just, we oppose, please just confirm that for us. Thank you so much.
All right, those are the two that had signed up, but you don't have to sign up to speak. Anyone else care to speak? Come on up. Ms. Yates.
I'm Vicki Yates, I live at 312 Bow Drive, and I'm a little nervous, because the last city council meeting I went to was when my dad was city manager in the 1960s, so this is a better space, it's a good process, I appreciate it. Like Chuck, I'd like to say thank you for letting us have a part in this deliberation, and it really would make us happy if we don't have to change all of our addresses, everybody we deal with, from Bow Drive to Bow Lane, and I think Darcy covered all the reasons. I would just add one thing that hasn't been in the email either, is that when Weston Home Place was developed, it was a Phase 1, which is where we live, and there was a Phase 2, which is now going to be Mariposa. The man who developed Phase 1, Charles Arnold, said he wanted it to be Bow Drive, because he didn't want to ever connect up with Bow Lane, he wanted this to be a separate subdivision, and that's the way it was begun. He wanted this to be a separate subdivision, and that's the way it was begun, and the original Platts and stuff, I'll say that. So at the time, there was discussion with the Fire Department about the transition from Bow Drive to Bow Lane, and there was some discussion for a little while about putting up just a gate or something. And they said, "We're fine with that as long as we have a key or a combination or whatever." So this is gonna be a lot simpler than that. And anyway, thanks for your time.
Thanks for giving my daughter a great English education at TIBY. She became an English teacher just because of you.
She was my main minister in church.
Did Delly call on you during the meeting or anything?
He knew better than that.
Anybody else care to speak? You don't have to sign up to speak. There we go. Mr. Brody.
So basically, what, I mean, you've heard from this neighborhood a lot, I'm sure, over the last few years, Mariposa being delivered. This is an opportunity to sort of, for lack of a better term, maybe it's director, I don't know, throw them a bone. Because for minimal gain, as she pointed out, if I'm an emergency vehicle and I turned onto the wrong one, oh my gosh, just go another block and I'm on the right one. It's not, because they're in numerical order, it's not really an issue. So changing the name causes stress. Not changing it, I really don't see the stress as being caused. So do no harm, leave it alone. If you had to change it, though, I would suggest that that map that was up there points out, if I'm not mistaken, the stub coming from south from Singing Wind is Bow Lane, right? Okay. And I believe there's only eight houses on that stub with Bow Lane as the address, which is less than the 10 you'd be changing here. Singing Wind is a natural break. So if you had to, if you really thought this was the best thing to do, to change it so it's consistent across the street break, that would make more sense because it impacts less people. I actually believe that you don't need to do it at all, but there's just another idea.
Any other speakers? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 7:32. My favorite part, Darcy, is when you demonstrated going up and down the block. That was pretty good. That was pretty good. And I was hoping George would also demonstrate going up and down the block. He failed to do so. All right, council, we have a recommendation from staff. We have heard from the residents which would be affected. Is there a motion?
Well, I want to mention first about all the people on Bow Lane that didn't want to be associated with the Bow Drive folks.
Really?
I'm just kidding.
All right, any action you want to take on Resolution 29-2025?
I'll make a motion that we not approve changing the lane, I mean, the street name to Bow Lane.
Second.
Keep it at Bow Drive.
Third.
Motion's been made and seconded. Don't want to tie this up in a bow, and there we go. All right, we have a motion, a second, and discussion. All in favor of the motion to not approve Resolution Number 29-2025, so vote. And the name stays the same. Good job.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item 6B. Ms. Barron's. This is a public hearing, so we'll-
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So I don't have a presentation for this. It's really pretty straightforward and simple. So as we did last year, we began adopting the fee schedule in total by resolution so that we could comply with the law as it reads that we have to adopt building permit fees. So that's why the fee schedule is separate, and the fee schedule is part of the budget. So you've seen that since the proposed budget was filed. You also have a copy of the fee schedule attached to this resolution. So there are staff in the room or elsewhere that might be able to answer specific questions about fee schedules. Some of those I can answer myself. But basically, this resolution is just to make sure that the city is compliant with the law that requires reauthorization of building permit fees.
Any questions for Ms. Barron's? All right, this is a public hearing. I'm gonna open it at 7:35. Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing also at 7:35. Is there a motion then on Resolution Number 31-2025?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 31-2025.
No, I wanted to say something.
Oh, we can discuss it. After the motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made, second, discussion.
Yes. I just wanted to say that I think we probably all got a letter or an email, I know I did, about the fees at the golf course. And I'm saying this so it's on the record, and everybody can hear it. The Jimmings wrote me a letter, or I got a letter from, this is CPA, and I just gotta say it because it doesn't make any sense at all to me at all to spend $4 million on a project and not have to raise the dues to play the golf course. I know a young lady said a while ago, "I don't play golf because I can't afford it," but that is a luxury that we have. It is a part of our parks and rec that we have here that is now going to be part of the enterprise fund to make money instead of operating out of the general fund. So hopefully, people will understand, you spend $4 million, you gotta charge a little bit more for it. And if you haven't, and he's a golfer, and, you know, he needs to go out there, or I encourage everybody to go out there and see the product that we have because it is one of the nicest municipal golf clubs I've ever seen.
And it's market rate.
Yes, very much so.
In fact, I talked to Bobby that runs the shop there, and he said he's not getting complaints. Because they've been out playing other places, and they found out it's market.
And I know the two other local area courses raised their dues as soon as we closed Shriner to redo it, so there we go. Anyway, I just had to get that out there. Sorry, Mayor.
Hard to say that, too.
Any other discussion? Because we have a motion and a second. So vote. All right, item number 7A, Resolution Number 32-2025. Does anyone need to present on this? That's your name.
Sharon from the Kirk Central Appraisal District. She requests nominations, either one or however many you would like to nominate for the Board of Directors term 2020. Five, 2026. Maybe 2026, 2027.
Six and 27.
Yeah, 2026, 2027.
Thank you, ma'am. What's the will of the council?
I was gonna nominate Kent. Second. Seems to have them all. That's my first thought.
Thank Kent. You willing to accept?
I don't know. Quite a bit. So how, nobody's talking to me about this.
It's fine, I don't know.
And let me just weigh in. I wasn't anticipating that. I'm not sure that legally you could do that because there is, obviously, the board-
It never happens with me.
... takes things that may not be in the interest of the city and vice versa. So I think there's an inherent conflict, not a legal conflict. Normally, it's my experience that you all adopt, or you all nominate someone, of course, that you've done before, and I don't know who that is, or that you nominate someone involved in that industry, a realtor, or a broker, or someone in the real estate business.
Feels like we're not ready to nominate anyone tonight.
And you do have time. You just have, we have to get that nomination to them because then what they do is they throw it out to all the local entities, and then you all vote, and you've seen the slate of votes.
15th of October.
Right, so you, I think you do have some time.
Not a lot of time because our next meeting will be-
October.
The 14th.
Fourteenth.
And we have to give it to Kirkad by October 15th, so.
A ton of time, no. But we can consider it. And you think we ought to have a committee of the council to come back to us with nominees?
Sure.
Would you care to serve on that committee?
Since I've been in real estate, that's not my concern.
I know you're probably too busy.
Why not? Just put another thing in.
Want to serve on that ad hoc committee to make recommendations?
We can meet for lunch and chat about it.
If you're too busy?
Only-
Okay.
Sure.
So why don't we do this? Why don't you have an ad hoc committee to come back to us with a nominee on the 14th?
Okay.
Fair?
Okay, yes, I just need, would like to have a job description or something about this.
I think Shelley can provide that to you.
Yes.
How many?
It's in the agenda bill and also the attachment.
We have eligibility and requirements. All right.
How many do we need?
Oh, I saw it.
It's a minimum of one, but I think we can nominate, we can-
You could spread your votes, however many votes you have. You can spread them out over however many people you technically want, or you can put all your votes into one person.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we'll look forward to your recommendation.
But this one's just nominations.
Yes.
Right.
And then we'll vote later.
Correct.
Thank you. We'll look forward to your nomination at the next meeting.
Okay.
Appoint the City of Kerrville delegate for the 2025 TML Annual Conference. I had a quick conference with Mayor Potem Brenda Hughes, and she said she would be willing to be our delegate. So I move that Brenda Hughes be the delegate to the TML.
I do, too. I'll assert it.
Send her.
Our farewell, bon voyage.
So there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say so vote. Here we go. And you're up.
All right.
Now, there is a speech you have to give.
Okay.
About Kerrville's emergency response during the flood. Ms. Barron's, item 8A. We've seen you a lot tonight.
I will be brief. So short financial update tonight. Just gonna look at general fund and water fund and give you a quick update on where we are with FEMA. So looking at the general fund, we are about 99% collected on property tax, so really tracking with budget. We have a few stragglers, but mostly what we're seeing a miss on right now is prior years and penalties, so that's really hard to budget for. So not really concerned about that. Sales tax, rolling 12-month average is trending up just a little bit, so we were about 1% coming into the year. We're almost at 3% now, so that's good news. Intergovernmental, you'll see a little bit ahead of budget there, but that's because we received a prepayment, so we expect that to level out in the next month. The biggest thing you're gonna see here is recreation revenue miss, and that is because we really have lost everything KSP-related and had to refund revenues that we had received for prepayment for future reservations. So we're watching that pretty closely. Golf reopening could help make up a little bit of that. We really won't know until September gets closer to ending and we see those revenues booked. So total revenues are running behind, but that is primarily, you can clearly see, due to recreation revenue. Personnel, we're still a little bit ahead of budget, but if you look through June, we were $300,000 ahead of budget, and now we're $63,000. That is fully from overtime and additional labor that we incurred due to the flood. So we are in the process of submitting for our FEMA reimbursement for a piece of that. It's gonna take a little while. We hopefully will expect to start submitting that the end of October 1st to November, but we don't expect to receive that for a little while. And remember, we'll only receive about 75% of what they determine to be eligible. So really working hard to make sure we reconcile all those things to be able to get as much back as we can. So that's coming soon. Looking at the water fund, so water and sewer both really close to budget estimate, so given our conditions that we've seen over the past few months, I would say that our water model is still working, so we're really happy with the redesign and the reduction in dependency on our irrigation. So that is working, and we expect to fully make budget in the water fund. A little bit over budget in personnel, but that is, again, related to additional labor and overtime related to the flood, so we're hopeful that we will get some of that back, although we expect that not to be till next year. So a little bit on flood and grant reimbursement, and I made a couple notes as there was a little bit of discussion early. So I wanted to clarify something on money coming in from FEMA. It is one source of money. So we don't have FEMA money and TIDAM money. So FEMA approves the projects that we find damages, and they say, "Yes, we feel like that project will be eligible at X amount." They disperse that money to TIDAM, who then disperses that money to us via the grant process. So FEMA's kind of our original source. Once they approve those federal dollars, then TIDAM handles them after that. So we don't have two pots of money there, so just wanted to clarify that a little bit. We have, continue to have weekly in-person meetings with our internal teams. It's going very well. We feel like we have really good FEMA and TIDAM representation at every meeting, as well as some outside sources that they have brought in that are subject matter experts when it comes to repairs and helping us with procurement and making sure that we're checking all the boxes on those things. So they have approved projects that they have determined to be eligible for reimbursement. We're working on the dollar amounts on a lot of those still, and once we land on that, then they will release those monies to TIDAM, and we can start working on the grant process for reimbursement. So still in progress, a lot of formal procurement processes that have to be followed, especially on our larger infrastructure projects, so we're working on that. Still working through allocation of insurance for some reimbursement so that we make sure we're best aligning those resources to get the most out of our FEMA monies on the backside. We have begun some repairs to some smaller projects, especially on some emergency repairs we needed to make, so that is going really well. And again, like we talked about earlier, we're in the process of reconciling labor and supplies that were part of our emergency protective measures in the initial response, and we hope to be submitting those for reimbursement, hopefully in the November timeframe. So we'll continue working on procurement process. We'll submit requests for reimbursement for all those Category B items as soon as we are able to. And then, of course, we're continuing to look at other funding sources through grants and other areas, especially in our parks, so working on that as well. So quick calendar update. Today, of course, was our final reading of the budget and tax rate, so thank you. We are looking forward to our upcoming year and what we can do to make sure we're providing services that our citizens need. We've started on our audit already, so that's in progress, and we'll continue through about the month of January, and we plan on bringing you a financial report again in March. We do want to remind people that the 20th of October is the deadline for their disaster exemptions, so people who qualify, we want to make sure that they're filing those, and they can get that information from Kirkad if they want that. And we'll be bringing you a budget in brief, or Jacob will, as soon as he gets it finished up, hopefully here in October, so we can see the budget in a very condensed form for-
May I interrupt you?
Yes, please.
Are we going to amend the budget? Do we need to publish the budget in brief before that budget is amended?
Well, we'll publish the budget in brief based on the operating budget, so, you know, when we bring back, and that's a good point, when we bring back the budget amendment will be after all the exemptions are filed, so we'll really be able to tell you what part of that was related to the disaster rate compared to what was proposed for the operational rate. So Dalton and I will discuss that and see if that's something we want to wait on, in which case that it may be a little while. And what we may do is summarize that, maybe in a more simple form as far as what the budget is doing with a little bit less detail. Yeah, that's a very good point, so I'll discuss that with Dalton and get back to you on that. So then we'll be doing GFOA budget award in December, so we're moving forward on a lot of things. Any questions on financial report, FEMA, anything like that? I know Michael gave you a pretty good update during workshop.
I just want to make a comment. I consider your numbers to be one of the most important parts of this city council meeting, and it upsets me that nobody is here to listen to those numbers because it's part of the reason why we make the decisions that we make.
That's a good point.
And I just want you to know how much I appreciate you giving us the information that we need to make the best decision that we can based on what we know and what we don't know and what you don't know. So thank you for that, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. I wonder if we could move it up? Should not be home relaxing. They all had questions that pertain to this in one way or the other, and they're gone.
We've had budget meetings and workshops and everything, and nobody shows up. Then they act like we haven't paid any attention, like we don't know what's going on.
I personally invited several people to the workshop before the last meeting, and nobody showed up. And they showed up for the meeting, but they didn't show up for the workshop. And the only thing I can say is they don't want to get educated because then they cannot defend themselves, saying, "I don't know that answer," because if you come, you're gonna know the answer. And so they can't excuse the actions.
Could you have had this report before we- Could you have had this report before we voted on the budget and tax rate?
I mean, this is an, uh, obviously a monthly report, so where it fits into the council agenda is really not my call, I guess, that's...
You could put it wherever y'all want.
I mean, you know, I kind of think they all were, that's what they were waiting for was what they stayed for and then left, and then this information kind of supports a lot of the reasons, not all of them, because we can't use some of these things for disaster rate.
I think it should be 1B right before the visitors.
They, they think it's important enough to come and state their case about their disagreement with our vote, but this is the reason, and they don't, they're not educated enough to...
Well, let's be careful. Uh, as the agendas are built, I'd be happy to put Ms. Barron's up earlier, but I'm, I'm afraid it might shock her system because she's usually the very last.
I'm used to being last, so it's okay. Whatever, whatever you guys decide is what we'll do, and we do post these online, not that, you know, the explanation's not as detailed, of course, but we do post them online.
But think about that for next year.
We, we, we build, uh, it's a, a, a wide group of people that builds the agenda, and, um, I'm happy to have you up occasionally before the rest of us are so tired.
I'm here either way, so...
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Barron's? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Julie.
And thank you for your crew that stayed the whole night, too.
Yeah.
Board appointments, 9A, appointment at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Who was the...
Yes, that was, um, Jeff and, and me, and we had lots of great applications. Um, one didn't qualify because they didn't live in the city, and, uh, at this time, I'd like to, um, recommend Carrie Bach to that committee, and I'd like to do that simply because her application was the first one received.
I will second that with also the comment that Carrie, when I talked to her about it, too, Carrie was like, you know, well, she, the other applicant would be amazing as well.
Yeah.
But the other applicant stressed to me that she really wants to be on, she's on tours right now, fixing her own tours, and she really wants to be on EIC next year.
Okay.
So, that's another great thing because the, uh, the appointment for Carrie. So, I second your motion, ma'am.
Motion's been made and seconded and discussion. All in favor, so vote. Carrie's up. All right. Item 9B, appointments of the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay, and that was, uh, the mayor and myself, and there was a little bit of a misunderstanding in that, um, two of the, um, the current members thought their terms, that they couldn't re, that they termed out, and come to find out that they had not termed out, they, they were still eligible to run for another term. Uh, so I talked to both of them, and one has decided to go ahead and give up, um, a reappointment, so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Don Chute, and then to replace, uh, Michael Killian, I'd like to move Connor Odom from an alternate spot to a, a regular member spot, and then I'd like to appoint Jody Tillman as the alternate, the second alternate.
I second that.
And that also is based upon the fact that she applied back in May, so, um, she had the earliest application, and she's qualified.
Second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passage unanimously. Thank you. All right. Do we have any items for future agendas? We have that one that we talked about earlier, which is the...
Sidewalk ordinance.
Sidewalk ordinance. Anything else?
Thanks, Emily.
All right, hearing none. The meeting is adjourned at 7:54. We have a, we have a brief executive session. Uh, we need a motion then to go into executive. Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry to have done that. I forgot about the other thing.
I move to go into executive session under...
551074.
Yes, under section 551074.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, so vote. Go upstairs for executive session. Yes, I just didn't see it. When I turn the page, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I overlooked that one item. Uh, I need to report, come back out of executive session and say that we took no action on any of the items discussed. We've already talked about items for future agendas. Does anyone see any reason why I can't adjourn the meeting at 8:17? All right. We're done.